It's nine o'clock. We'll call today's Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's note for the public that there's a copy of the Open Meetings Law on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Also, in the back of the room, there's an automatic defibrillator if needed for health reasons. Also, if you would, we'd ask everybody to please silence or turn off their cell phones. Before we start, based on the conditions of the weekend, let me say that just what general update and information will be coming out. Date on the flooding and what's going around Douglas County. As of Monday afternoon, 200 people in Douglas County have been rescued and approximately 180 miles of Douglas County road has been impacted by the flooding. Want to take this opportunity to thank the first responders in Waterloo and Valley and the surrounding areas for the work that they've done in managing the water rescue for the several days and other isolated communities around Douglas County. I want to give a special thanks to the Unified Command that's made up here whenever we get into emergency, get into emergencies, which is made up of several agencies in Douglas County, including the Omaha Fire Department, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the Omaha Police Department, Omaha Parks and Recs, and the Omaha Airport Authority, also the Health Department and other related entities. So, a lot of people have been impacted. We want to thank you all for your efforts. And also, just note this is going to be a long recovery. We've been through this before in 2011, and we'll make it through again. And with that, thank everybody for their service for this weekend. With that, I want to call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 12th, 2019. Item B is to call for a meeting set Tuesday, March 26th as a date for hearing on certified corrections and assessments. What's the will of the Board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Craft. Please vote.
For those in the audience at home, Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear once again, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of commissioners. Motion passes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for comments on Board of Equalization related items not listed on the agenda today. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We'll go on to resolutions. We have resolutions. D, E, F, G is removed, H and I. What's the will of the Board?
Motion to approve and adjourn.
Motion to approve and adjourn by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will now call to order Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 12th, 2019. Letter B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. What's the will of the Board?
Motion to approve and adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Duda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
I'll be abstaining. There are some checks to my company for property we manage.
Commissioner Craft? Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining. All their commissioners voting yes.
Okay. We'll go to the consent agenda. There are 10 items on consent agenda. What's the will of the Board? Motion approved by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go to item three, which is recognition and proclamations. Recognition proclaimed in March 21st, 2019 as World Down Syndrome Day in an effort to help raise awareness of what Down Syndrome is and how people with Down Syndrome play a vital role in our lives and communities. Commissioner Borgeson.
We were supposed to have a video called up, but it, they never came and did it. Okay. So I'll just read the resolution. Whereas about 6,000 babies with Down Syndrome are born in the United States each year, and whereas Down Syndrome is caused by a genetic abnormality where a full or partial extracopy of chromosome 21 appears on the 23 pairs of chromosomes in the nucleus of every cell where genetic material is stored, according to the National Down Syndrome Society. And whereas World Down Syndrome Day, March 21st, is a global awareness day which has been officially observed by the United Nations since 2012. And whereas World Down Syndrome Day aims to raise awareness of what Down Syndrome is, what it means to have Down Syndrome, and how people with Down Syndrome play a vital role in our lives and communities. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board does hereby proclaim March 21st, 2019 as World Down Syndrome Day in an effort to help a global voice of advocating for the rights, inclusion, and well-being of people with Down Syndrome dated this 19th day of March, 2019. And I would ask for a motion to approve, or I would move for approval.
This is motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Morgan.
And one of the activities that comes along with this is on March 21st, they want everybody to wear crazy unmatched socks. And so then when you do, take a picture of your socks and send them in, and we'll have a $25 gift card that we will give to the winner. And so I already had people tell me, I won't say who they are, but they've already told me they're going to win. So, so you wear two crazy unmatched socks on the 21st.
All day.
Take a picture, all day. Take a picture, send it in, and to our office, and we will pick a winner and a $25 gift card. So it's again, just another way to, people will ask, why are you doing this? And you talk about the Down Syndrome.
Okay. I think our chairman will win that one going away. I've seen his socks. Usually they match though, but.
Yeah, they match.
Mary Ann, would you do me a favor? And I see you have a partner there with you.
Yes.
Get her up closer.
This is our granddaughter, Rayleigh. She's in first grade, and they have spring break today. And so can you see herself on the TV? And so she's kind of shadowing me for a little while today, so.
Well, she's very beautiful, I noticed when you walked in, and.
Thank you.
What a sweet little girl. Great to have you here.
Thank you.
With that, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Douglas County and Board of Commissioners related items that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. You know, some people don't, some people think the things I say or the way I say them are kind of ridiculous, but I'm going to go at it again. There's nothing on the agenda per se this morning, so I guess I can comment on just about everything under the sun, according to your rule. But what I do want to comment on is, as a citizen taxpayer, I think it's kind of silly for you to have these mini meetings in the hours in between the city council and the Board of Commissioners meetings. A small committee meeting is what we call on today at 1:00. It's on the juvenile justice center, et cetera, under Youth Services Committee, I understand. But I would think we could handle those discussions here in this chamber, and those small rooms don't accommodate very many citizens. So, I kind of feel that under the Open Meetings Act that we're skirting the issues on a lot of things, maybe in an unconstitutional way. I want you to rethink about those things. It's, I may like to stay for the city council meeting, but I'd prefer to be up there to hear the opposing views on the things going on in the juvenile center. But that's not possible to be in both places. And most of the time, for example, the city council has that mini meeting, it, very few seats in that room. Very few people can get in there except the bigwigs around Omaha. So you're not really being transparent in Omaha with a lot of the meetings that we have. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to the public hearing. And item A is to provide additional budget dollars for salary adjustment account and transfer budget dollars that are set aside in salary adjustment account for future salary increases. It will provide additional budget dollars for budget increases with revenue offsets for the sheriff, GIS, and 911. Increased budgets for corrections, risk insurance, the county attorney, emergency management, 911 wireless surcharge fund, and the state institutions fund. Budget dollars will also be provided to bring environmental service up to its original account, which was reduced to fund the settlement with the IRS and fees and contracts. Budget dollars will also be provided to capital improvement to fund bridge financing for the purchase of the MUD site. Director Lorenz.
Hi, Joe Lorenz, Douglas County Finance Director, and I have three charts to kind of summarize our budget supplement. You know, we generally go twice a year with a public hearing, at which time we do budget supplements, which will increase our approved budget. So this is the first one of the year. The total budget supplement requested is 11,401,848, which is a lot of money. And I just want to break out the components to give everybody a better understanding. The largest piece is $6 million for bridge loan financing. And this is not a bridge like was washed away in a flood. This is a bridge that's meant to bridge the financing. When we purchase the MUD property across the street, it'll be purchased by the county, and then within hopefully less than 30 days, the Public Building Commission bond financing will be completed, at which time the Public Building Commission will purchase the MUD property from the county and pay us the $6 million back. So this is just really a temporary measure of $6 million for the county, but it has to be budgeted for. So that's $6 million, the largest component. The second piece to show, and I have a backup slide for this I'll show later, is certain departments have requested increases to their budgets, which have revenue offsets either from grants or other sources of funding. So it's not a net increase to the budget. And so that's $942,941 will be through that source of revenue offset. So the net budget increase that is being requested now is $4,458,907, which represents a 1.1% increase to the approved budget that we approved last fall. So the key summary of where that money is being spent is first, salary adjustments. We're increasing that fund balance by 2.1 million, and I have a backup chart. I'll get to that right after this. That gives us further detail on that. Secondly, the corrections budget would be increased by $698,907, primarily due to overtime cost at the facility. $550,000 is being used for the IRS settlement that we made regarding uniform allowance and taxes on that. We already paid that, but this is just moving the money back and giving it, because we funded it out of environmental services, and now this is giving it back and making their budget whole. So this is just, that's already been spent, and this is just kind of some house cleaning on that. Third is risk insurance. A significant workers' comp claim. That's going to be approximately $500,000. That should settle in April. Next is the county attorney. There's been a significant increase in both the number and the cost of autopsies. So the county attorney is requesting $320,000 to cover those increased costs. Next is state institutions for competency evaluations. Where we've spent the budget, we've had like $225,000 originally budgeted for it. That's all gone. And just the amount of competency evaluations and the length of time they spend there and the expense has increased dramatically. So we have to add another $250,000 to get us through the rest of the year. And then the last one is from the emergency management department as they say they have to start a siren upgrade program, and they want to start it out with $40,000 this year. So those are the components of the net budget increases. Any questions on those?
Let me first open the public hearing. Are there anybody, is there anyone from the public wants to comment on the item? Please do.
Thank you. Before the public gets up to speak, I just wanted to add to what Joe said on the salary adjustments, that those monies are obligated through union contract negotiations primarily. So those really are monies that have to be paid out.
Good morning. Doug Kagan, 416 South 130th Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. You are discussing today an 11.4 million budget adjustment, $4 million in new spending apparently. And we call this a budget increase. Granted, several of these increased costs, such as higher autopsy expenses, are unavoidable, and other expenses were anticipated. Nonetheless, we believe commissioners have been overly generous on employee contracts, which constitute a sizable percentage of this, quote, "adjustment," unquote. Also, the county is facing a large new expense for its justice center expansion and what we consider an extravagant plan for a new juvenile justice center. Several items included in this increase we see frequently, such as the sheriff's department and the health center. Our taxpayer group repeatedly has questioned the Board why it has not implemented reforms suggested for the health center by health management associates several years ago. Likewise, we continually have requested commissioners to consider ending non-mandated services, such as the law library and dental clinics. This year, this Board inevitably will present county taxpayers with reasons why our county property taxes must rise. Taxpayers expect you all to make a good faith effort to justify this tax hike. It is time for commissioners to break out the boning knives and begin to carve away non-necessities from the county budget. Several commissioners have diminished their political capital they earned in the past with our organization. You can gain it back by working with us to thoroughly scrutinize county budgetary expenses and find places to cut. Thank you.
Any other public, oh, you got a question for me?
I just want to respond a little bit to.
He can, he can.
Yeah, you, this is, thank you. Doug, we appreciate the work you do and your group does. And I just want to comment on a couple of points. When you talked about some generous salary increases, we take a lot of time on that, and you can respond too about it. And one of the big increases, and I stand to be corrected by other commissioners on this, is, you know, down at the correction facility, we've had a tremendous amount, and Joe, you have some of those numbers, of overtime down there. And one of the things we did do, and as you know, the, some of the people from the correction facility, a good number of them are here, we found that we were paying much less than Conseblas, Iowa, and others, and they were leaving us to go to some of the, like Sarpy County and so on. And we're still not out of the woods as far as that overtime factor and trying to hire people for our correction facility. And we've had some briefings in recent days, not weeks, on that exact matter and the need for new people there. And it's a tough job, and they do a great job down there with Mike Meyer and Amber and so on. But that's one of the areas where we have been generous in trying to do the comps with other communities. Marcos, Diane, Carlson do a great job of looking at those and providing them. And that's what brought us to those salary increases. And I just want to mention that, and you could comment if you want on that issue, and then I have something else.
Well, we weren't referring to that particular sector, the employee pay increase. What we were referring to is basically your union contracts. We look at the cost of living increase for Midwest urban. It's put out by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and we compare that to your, what you give your employees for salary increases. And every year, your salary increases are higher than the CSI, so, the CPI. So that's, that's why we made that comment.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And all I would tell you is we really do spend time, and if it's appropriate, I can say, we work hard at looking at comps, and we do make final best offers, and then sometimes it ends up at the CIR, as you know, and what happens there. Lastly, I just want to say, again, because I think it's appropriate to at least say to you, when you talk about the cost at the youth center, you know, we're still in discussions about that. But when you look at that, there's a misconception out there because I think a lot of people keep talking about the $100 million jail downtown, and it's a detention center. And we've really looked at that carefully. And the fact is, the cost of that is probably 25 to 30 million for that facility. We think and believe that there's a good chance we may be able to get $10 million from the private sector of that, 25 to 30 million. We also believe that we're going to get hopefully a $5 million amount of money to assist us in better programs and those kinds of things. And plus, we think there's some commitment, hopefully, for some shelters, which will reduce the number of youth in there. And so I want to be clear that, you know, of those numbers, and I, I know Mary Ann and Chris Rogers have worked hard. So I just wanted to comment on the cost of that facility.
Commissioner Boyle, you got a response to this? Okay. Anybody else for Mr. Kagan? Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
I still have a couple more charts.
Okay. Wait a minute. Since we're in public comment, any other public comment? Any other public comment? We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion from the Board to approve?
No moves.
There's a motion, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, you want it?
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Just a couple of quick questions on what you're presenting to us. The MUD bridge financing on here is the largest single item at $6 million. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And you say that's a temporary bridge that we will be totally held harmless and.
Repaid.
Pay back on?
Yes.
Okay. Then the total 11.4 million dollar package, where do these monies actually come from in our budget?
The majority of it, as you see on your page, the majority of it is coming from general fund reserves. And then there's some other, other funds that some is going to come from the wireless fund reserve, and I'll get into that, that actually 911 Communications has been working with the Public Service Commission, and they've okayed that there's a fair amount of money in that reserve that they've okayed for certain expenditures that are budgeted to be used this year. But the majority of the money would come from general fund reserves.
Okay. We don't have a page on that, or you're going to give us a page on that? Is that?
If you look at your, the, you can see that budget adjustments, general fund, 8.5 million is coming from the general fund, where it says, Page Two, Budget Adjustments, General Fund.
I have salary adjustments on my page, too.
Not the handout on the resolution.
Oh, I see. Okay. So the bulk of it comes from general fund reserves. And what's the balance on the general fund reserve right now?
Right now, the balance of the general fund reserve is about $13 million. But by, you know, the first week of April, it should be up over 30 to 40 million when the March 31st property tax receipts come in. So we're kind of right at our low point right now. But taxes are, property taxes are starting to come in, the receipts right now.
And we're not using any inheritance tax revenues on this? Is that right?
No.
Okay. There is a portion in here, it's unused salaries adjusted from fiscal year 16, 17.
Yeah, yeah. Let me, let me take you through that. Can you put on the second page on this? Oh, I can do it. You're right. It's just in there, right? Got it. Okay. Let's go through that. So you can see, this is the salary adjustment account. And there's two components of 2.8 million, which is for the contract adjustments and salary increases for this year. And then there was also a retro pay component of a little over a million. So the total salary adjustment was 3.0, close to 3.9 million. And of that, there's two operations which make up the largest components. Corrections at $1,008, which accounts for 46% of the salary adjustment. And then the health center, community mental health center, at $1,235,000, which represents 32% of the total salary adjustment. So those two 24/7 operations are accounting for 78% of the total salary adjustments. And, you know, there's, were some significant union contracts that took a long time to settle there. And as Commissioner Morgan said, there were some increases brought up at the corrections facility and also at the health center regarding the pay rates for registered nurses when, because there was a registered nurse shortage. So that's what's the driver there. And then if you look at the, the retro pay, you see it's a million, about 60,000. But two of the, at least two of these contracts settled in different fiscal years than they were supposed to. So we usually, you know, this year, we're going to require a 2.1 million adjustment, increase to the salary adjustment account. But in the last two years, there's been a total of 1,001 that we didn't use. And salaries can't be encumbered. So if the contract doesn't settle in the year that the contract expires, even though it's budgeted for, we can't save that money. So in a year like this, where we have big contract settlements, really with prior period adjustments, that's what really necessitates the significant supplement to the salary adjustment account.
And that's exactly the point I was going to. So if I understand you right, we had anticipated that there was going to be a contract settlement, and so we had budgeted for that.
Right.
There wasn't during that period of time.
Time.
And so those monies were not spent.
Spent.
But they didn't go away. And so now, when we're doing the retro to cover that period, those monies are being used.
Yes.
Retroactively.
Yes. But they're, they're in a different budget year, so.
Right, right. But these aren't like unexpended, you know, office monies that they just didn't spend in. in that year. These were actually budgeted for personnel purposes and then never utilized.
Right, and you can't carry them over. They can't encumber them because you can't encumber salary.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
And that, I'm sorry, but that, that was two fiscal years in a row?
Yes. In those two fiscal years, we had over $1 million that we didn't use, and then you can see the retro payment that we made is about $1 million. So it was actually very close in being budgeted for.
All good. Thanks.
Seeing as there is a motion, and so.
One more.
Okay.
And then, this is just the final chart of those departments that had budget adjustments with revenue offsets, and you can see the sheriff was grant funded. 911 Communications is being able to get a bigger contribution, a bigger use of the 911 Wireless Fund, which we discussed, which was due to their discussions and negotiations with the Public Service Commission. The GIS department had money that was funded by MAPPA data sales that they generated, that they are allowed to use in their budget. And finally, the 911 Wireless Fund is going to have some equipment expenditures, again, funded by that Wireless Fund Reserve, which was okayed by the Public Service Commission. So those are the components of that. So those are, that's all I have.
There is a motion, the second. Please vote.
Joe, thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item seven is committee discussions. Item A is the finance committee. Item one is the budget report.
As presented.
As presented. We'll go on to item G, which is human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil services, and that is as submitted. Item two is legislative items, and we do have a request by Commissioner Boil. Commissioner Boil.
Yes. LB 327 would add a 5% increase to provider rates for this next biennium, and I think it would be prudent for us to support this, because any increase in dollars we can potentially get to, from the state to providers for these services would be well worth it, so I would ask that we support that.
That's a motion. Is there a second? Motion second. You ready?
Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Commissioner Boil.
Yes, this is related. Related issues. There's a couple of ongoing problems with Douglas County getting its fair share of revenue, even though we don't, I mean, we're, all county government is stepchildren of the state, and it's just, sometimes we're the ugliest one, I guess. But one of the ongoing issues that I went down and spoke to the organization myself, but didn't make any headway, some years ago, there was some funding put together to offer public defender services to outlying counties that I think that couldn't support it and so forth. And instead of that happening, it goes all to Lancaster County, and it's a real bummer of an issue, you know, they're totally getting subsidized, and it comes from money that are fees that are paid in Douglas County, from what I understand. So we really get, need to get that straightened out somehow, and get somebody on our side in Lincoln, and talk to some senators about it. I think we've got some really good people there, so we should be able to get something maybe moving on that for a change. The other thing is the ongoing drama of the cell phone revenue. To use a, kind of a phrase that most people don't understand, we're getting hosed, big time. The money that we pay in goes to the rest of the state, just in large numbers. And so every time we ask for an increase in cell phone fees and so forth, it doesn't make any sense, because it's just sending more money out to our friends out in the country. Some time ago, I was at a meeting with Chris Rogers, and we were in Lincoln, and there were about 400 NACO people there, and I was sitting up in front, and I'm not sure if Chris was near me or not, but Senator Urban, I think you remember this, Senator Urban was not a senator then, he was a county chairman, and Steve and I get along real well, in spite of the fact that he's conservative, should I say? Anyway, so, we're good friends. But anyway, so I, I said, I just want to ask a question because of some of the things that were being said. And I stood up and I turned around to the audience, and I said, "Why do you hate us in Douglas County? Why do you hate Omaha and Douglas County?" And a voice from the back said, "Because we're carrying the load." And I thought, "Oh, my God, you know, this is not, you know, we, we need to get," I'm not saying they aren't contributing their taxes, they certainly have a lot of problem with evaluation on farmland, and I get that, and I'm sympathetic to it. But we're in this together, and we have an attitude in the counties that it's, you know, us versus them, and them versus us, and we need to come to grips with that, because, you know, that's just not what's happening. But somehow, we need to get these two things, I think, would be good targets, the public defender funding and cell phone funding, and get our fair share. I think we ought to try for that.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we do have a need for an executive session for, oh, sorry, Commissioner Boil.
I was trying to get as much information today as I could. This is related to the flooding and some of the services that we provide. I'm getting word that, like, our seniors center in Fremont is underwater, and so, and we can't deliver the home-delivered meals. So we're sending a truck today, probably on its way, with, they're called shelf-stable meals, that we're sending out there for our seniors. And then the DD programs that we have, both in Bellevue and the one in Fremont are underwater. We also had folks who were working at the Valmont factory, and that was evacuated, so was our office on the main street. We lost vans. We did have to close down four homes in the Bellevue area and had to be evacuated, and we have those folks living in the Fremont area, and have those folks living in other group homes for right now, because all of the hotels and motels were full, and there was no way in and out. So once the water starts receding, we'll be able to get in there and do a little bit better assessment. We did have to evacuate the Orchard Gardens that the Douglas County Housing Authority runs, and I got to tell you, all of the staff of these agencies have stepped up like no other to make sure that the clients we serve were safe. So I give them absolute kudos for that. And just to piggyback on to Commissioner Rogers, Chair Rogers' comments about our emergency managers, responders, you know, it starts with our 911 folks, and they have not missed a beat. Our Waterloo folk out there have a very small department, and our county sheriff's office has stepped up to really help, as well as surrounding area entities. And it, through this devastation, it's just absolutely heartwarming to see people be pulled, pulling together of trying to help each other in this devastation. And there's more to come. Once the water recedes again and we start to assess, we will definitely be needing more. We'll be getting calls from seniors needing help, from the DD folks in their homes and the day program. So, anyway, it's all around just tragic, but again, we prove that counties matter, and counties are stronger than we think, and this is a perfect example of how we're all pulling together. Thank you.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes, and, you know, there's talk about FEMA money. FEMA money is not 100%. I was briefed on that this morning. FEMA pays 75%. The state pays 12.5%, and it doesn't look like the state's going to have much of that 12.5%. And the local governing body pays 12.5%. So this is one of those unforeseen tragedies and dramas that happens with our revenues. I can assure you that there's going to have to be some way to pay for repairing the bridges, the streets, the roads, the equipment we lost. The money has to come from somewhere. And as far as, as the mention about mandated services, we have shown year after year after year, that the unmandated services we do pay for themselves in the savings to other departments.
That's right.
And it'd be nice if the state would fund the unfunded mandates, but the unmandated services are a very vital aspect to our city. Keeps people out of jails, keeps people out of the health center, keeps people on their feet and housed. So we need to be prepared for not just additional costs this year, additional costs the next two or three or four years, because this is not going to be solved overnight. Thank you.
Commissioner Boil.
The, the other statistic, that's pretty phenomenal, because it's not just us that are under these disasters, but there've been 65 counties across the state of Nebraska that are under some emergency declaration for disaster, 74 cities in four tribal areas. And so that's, what, do the math, two-thirds?
Two-thirds, yeah.
Two-thirds of our Nebraska counties are affected by this, and so while we each have our own devastating circumstances, it's widespread across the state of Nebraska, and so our thoughts and prayers go out to everybody.
With that, we do have a need for an executive session for litigation and labor negotiations. There's a motion by Commissioner Boil, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. And again, we're going into session for litigation and labor negotiations.
Motion. No, you did. Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
I wanted to make an amendment to that, that.